Good evening, welcome everybody to tonight's Brimbank Council meeting. My name is Lieutenant Congrade and I am the Mayor of Brimbank City Council. I'd like to clear this meeting open at 7pm and I'd just like to say welcome. It's so nice to have a full gallery standing around me, I don't think we've seen that before. So, welcome to everybody in the gallery tonight. In the unlikely event of an emergency, please follow the direction of the council offices and the emergency procedures which are on the wall near the door. I'd also like to note that I've given approval for the journalists from the Star Weekly to record this meeting. Item 31, Mr Fong Chan, Mr Trung Lee and Ms Phuk An Nguyen, as I said to audio and video, record this evening's meeting. Members of the gallery are not intended to be recorded, but please notify the mentioned names or a council officer if you have any concerns. So, we're going to go straight on to item one, I'll ask everybody to stand please for the acknowledgement of country. On behalf of the Brimbank City Council, I would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of this land, the Warren Gru people, and pay our respects to elders past and present. Thank you, everybody sit down, so all the councillors please remain standing. For item number two, which is the council commitment. As a council, we will act in the best interest of the Brimbank community and consider the immediate and long-term impacts of our decisions. We will make these decisions fairly and without bias. We will uphold all of our obligations under the laws of Victoria and council local laws and we will act in accordance with our code of conduct. Thank you councillors, please be seated. So, item number three is apologies and leave of absence. There are no apologies this evening, but we have a recommendation in relation to approving a leave of absences. So councillors, do I have a motion for leave of absence? Councillor Chong, would you like to move the motion please?
Yes Madam Mayor, I would move it. It's July 1st.
Thank you councillor Chong, is there a second to for that motion? Councillor Borg? I'll put that to the vote, all those in favour?
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry for this amendment, it's actually the 12th of May to the 17th of June, myself. Unless you want to give me another week of June. So, if you'd like to amend it, thank you.
I'll give you just a correct answer. Well, I have to correct that as an administrative item, so just to update, we're approving a leave for councillor Papafotia for the period of 16th of July to 23rd of July 2019 and councillor Judith Chee for the period of 12th of May to the 17th of June 2019. 17th of May, thank you. May 2019 inclusive. Any questions councillors? No? I'll put that to the vote, all those in favour? Carried. Okay, item number four is disclosure of conflicts of interest. Councillors, are there any conflicts of interest to declare this evening? Councillor David?
Yes Madam Mayor, I declare the interest in weapons to as number 10, 10.1. This is the group question, so I haven't cleared a lot of members of the council.
Thank you councillor David. Councillor Fan?
Yes Madam, I would like to declare the conflict of interest on report 12.11. It's in that report of interest.
Thank you councillor Fan. Councillors, are there any further conflicts of interest to declare? No? Okay. So, we're going to move on to item number five, which is the designation of items as confidential. So, there are two items to be designated as confidential this evening. May I have a mover of a motion to designate the items as confidential please? Councillor Borg?
Yes Madam Mayor, I moved that the, we have two items designated as confidential.
Thank you councillor Borg, is there a second to this item? Councillor Tarkos? All those in favour? Carried, thank you. Okay, so we're moving on to item number six, which is confirmation of minutes of previous council meetings. May I have a mover of a motion to confirm the minutes of the previous council meetings? Councillor David? Would you like to move as per the papers?
As per the papers.
Thank you councillor David. And is there a second to? Councillor Allen? I'll put that to the vote, all those in favour? Carried. Okay, item number seven is condolences and there are no items of condolences this evening. So, we'll move straight on to item number eight, which is congratulations. And there are two items of congratulations this evening. So, item 8.1 is successful sporting teams for 2018-2019 summer season. And I think it would be appropriate for this council to congratulate the successful sporting teams of the 2018-2019 summer season. So, councillor Papafotia, would you like to move this motion?
Yes I would, thank you, as per papers or the PowerPoint presentation, thank you.
Is there a second to this motion? Councillor Tarkos? Councillor Papafotia, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you. It's been another wonderful year for our sporting clubs in Brimbank. Each year there seem to be more successes and the clubs are doing extremely well. Councillor, congratulations, congratulations are extended to all the Brimbank teams on their recent successes over the summer season. There are too many to mention, so we've listed them on the PowerPoint presentation. Congratulations to these teams and especially to all the families and volunteers that put in hours and hours of work each week. So, well done to all the teams, thank you.
Thank you councillor Papafotia. Councillor Tarkos, is there a second to if you'd like to speak?
Thank you. I'd also like to congratulate all the teams that were successful and they seem to be spread wide across Brimbank, which is fantastic. Would also like to extend that to all the kids and seniors and the parents and volunteers who turn up and do all the hard yards. Also have a late congratulations that I would like to extend to Prue Huston, who is a Brimbank resident for taking out the Masters in the women's, strong women's competition recently, which is fantastic. And an additional congratulations albeit late for Peter Thompson, who just showed me his nomination for the State Shined on Awards for People with Disability for their contributions to the community and achievements over the years. So, on behalf of Brimbank Council, we also appreciate all the hard work, thank you.
Thank you councillor Tarkos, is there anyone else who would like to speak to this motion? No? Okay, councillor Headich?
Thank you Madam Mayor, I'd just like to acknowledge the words that have been said before and I'd also like to make particular note of the sporting teams. I think there's a lot of competition around the western region of Melbourne and beyond into the northern region and others where teams from this particular community compete. Brimbank teams are up against it, they're very strong competition. So, for all these clubs to have succeeded is a real feather in their cap. I'd also like to acknowledge Peter's work on the disability action committee and also on the network, the disability network he does. I think his recognition is well deserved and the power of work that goes into Peter's hands. So, congratulations there.
Thank you councillor Headich. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Councillor David?
Thank you Madam Mayor and indeed, you and I attended the Garden City Garden last month in reference to the 90 year anniversary, wonderful thing. I think Sunshine is getting old because I attended the, yeah, council, I myself, I attended it, the Sunshine Bank Drive where they're celebrating their 90 year. 1928 or something like that. And 1928, that's when they formed the year of that. And I found out the night, we got to the councillor Chong, that he was saying, first, you know, slightly as well, they had the first hockey blades in Melbourne, at the corner of Colling Street and Swansworth Street. So, this is personal, congratulations to all of them. And next year we should, all the councillors who are paying, the anniversary of the Garden City. The President told me today, don't forget to do that. 100 years, that's a big thing, yeah. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you councillor David, is there anyone else who would like to speak to this motion? So, councillor Headich, you've already spoken.
Sorry, I'll put the, the next one.
No, not yet. Anyone else who'd like to speak to this one? No? I'll put it to the vote, all those in favour? Carried, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to item 8.2, which is Our Ladies Primary Schools 100 Year Anniversary. I think it would be appropriate for this council to congratulate Our Ladies Primary School on their 100 year anniversary. So, please do a mover of a motion. Councillor Headich? Thank you councillor Headich. Seconded by councillor David, closely followed by councillor Chong. Councillor Headich, would you like to speak to the motion?
I would, Madam Mayor. Our Ladies Primary School is a very well-known local school in the Brimbank and wider western regions, Melbourne and beyond. Our Ladies Primary School has been here for a long, long time. As we know, 12th of October 1919 is the formal opening date. And they celebrated a week, two weeks ago with a festival of space. Lots of people, lots of old friends, lots of catching up. And most of all, lots of kids and lots of fun. My connection to the primary school goes back to the mid-eighties when I arrived to live in Melbourne with my beautiful wife, who went to that school along with all her family back in the 50s and 60s. And I guess my connection through the school board was where I got pinned into in my first year here, was a terrific one, I got to know some really fabulous people and they're still friends today. Our Ladies School has a reputation for teaching kids leadership through values and it continues to do that. It's a school that includes everyone, no matter where they come from, whatever their religion and whatever their background. If people don't have means to pay the reasonable fees that are there, they are accommodated. It is a truly values-driven school. It's been situated in the harbour sunshine, 9th Street for quite some, well, for all that time and has a strong and positive relationship with the wider community and reflects the ever-changing cultural diversity of our community. You can see it every year, it changes that little bit more. And 75% of students at the school have a background of English. The 100 year fates, as I said, was a roaring success. I think the biggest thing of all was the reconnection of a whole range of people over many, for many decades, back into local community, but also back to their friends' networks and so on. So, a great press corporation, great school and a long may have a presence in our community and contribute to leadership and I guess good civic responsibilities in children that come through. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Headich. With a second to like to speak, councillor David, would you like to speak to this one? Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Councillor Chong?
Thank you Madam Mayor. I would like to share with my eldest daughter, our lady, with our preschool. This, this is the doctor, this school really support and encourage especially after Brimbank. It's mostly in need of a dollar. And when I told my daughter it already is celebrating 100 years, she really surprised us. She tried to contact all the girls, so they come back. I think it, I believe how care, how support and how lovely with all the children have been studied there. It's now they're going up, they have a different view or different business. But I still remember and I bravely make all the care and support and I'm going to meet, meeting again with some of the parents who have the children studying the same power with my daughter, congratulations.
Thank you councillor Chong. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for an extra session? No? I'll put it to the vote, all those in favour? Carried. Okay, that's the end of the congratulations. So, we're moving on to item number nine, which is public question time. Obviously, I understand we have received some questions from members of the public this evening.
Yes, two questions from Peter Thompson, please to attend. The first question is, now that the Royal Court of St Lawrence have moved into the Vicarage Building, will council be installing a number of extra disabled parking spaces around the building? At the moment, there are many people trying to visit them, but they're unable to park due to there only being two disabled spaces, which is nowhere near enough.
Thank you Peter for your question. So, I've been advised that the Royal Court of St Lawrence has contacted council in relation to this matter and the request is currently under consideration by council officers. Notwithstanding that, council officers will review the request. I've been asked, I've been advised that there are currently two disabled parking spaces abutting with the Vicarage Building. As you indicated in your question, and there are also four other disabled parking spaces within the Clark Street car park, which means it's a total of six disabled parking spaces in the area. I'll request that council officers provide you with an update on the outcome of the review once it's completed.
The second question is, now that council has been granted a six-month extension of the metro access position granted by the MDIA, will money be provided in the next 2019-2020 budget to employ a metro access officer after December 31st, when the funding ends? I think council, council cannot afford to lose somebody like a current officer with ill-brunish expertise. Also, if employed by council with the title of renamed disability services officer as metro access worker is okay.
Thanks Dan, Peter for your question. We've received confirmation from the MDIA that the metro access officer position funded through the building, inclusive of communities programme, has indeed been extended until the 31st of December. As previously informed, councillors considering a disability role as part of the 2019-2020 budget process. Council remains committed to the principles of quality, choice, diversity, non-discrimination and access to quality services and acknowledges the role undertaken through the metro access officer role and the expertise offered in this area. It is the CEO's responsibility to determine matters related to the employment of staff. We have no further questions this evening. So, we're going to move now on to item number 10, which is petitions. So, there are three petitions to be received this evening. So, councillors, I'll be asking for a procedural motion to formally receive these petitions. Now, item 10.1 is cease construction of white towers at the western suburb of South Park, Ruff Street. Councillor David, would you like to declare your conflict?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to declare it, please to my, my life membership of the council.
Thank you councillor David. So, councillor David will leave the room, white towers to reflect. Okay, councillors, is there a mover of the motion, a procedural motion to receive this petition?
Would you move the motion, the procedural motion as per your business papers today?
Thank you councillor Tarkos, is there a second to for that motion?
Seconded, Madam.
Seconded councillor Judith Chee, the procedural motion, so I'll put it straight to the vote. All those in favour of receiving? Carried, thank you. Someone invite councillor David, can you please? Welcome back councillor David.
Thank you Madam.
So, may I be on to item 10.2, which is tree removal on St Alwyn's Road. Is there a mover of a motion to receive this particular petition? Councillor Papafotia, is there a second to for this item? Councillor Borg? It's a procedural motion, so we'll go straight to the vote, all those in favour? Carried, thank you. And we have one last petition, which is item 10.3, which is objection to planning application P512 data 2018. And may I have a mover of a motion to receive this particular petition? Councillor Tarkos?
I'm happy to move the procedural motion as per business papers.
Thank you. Judith Chee, second, okay, I'll put that to the vote, all those in favour? Carried. Okay. We're now moving on to item number 11, which is minutes and reports of special committees. And there are no minutes or reports from special committees this evening. So, we will move straight on to item number 12, which is officer reports. So, there are 12 reports for consideration by council this evening. And the first item is item 12.1, which is the draft annual budget 2019-2020, which includes the draft long-term financial plan 2019 to 2029 and draft rating strategy 2019 to 2020. So, councillors, before we consider this report, I'd like to present the draft annual budget for 2019-2020 to the meeting. So, I'm just going to stand up and do a little bit of presentation, we'll pop it up on the screen. Justy?
Mm-hmm.
The problem with taking short is not if you see each other. So. Along with my fellow councillors, I am very, very proud to introduce Brimbank City Council's annual budget for 1920 financial year. The focus of our current council continues to be on all aspects of improving and enhancing our city, investing in its built and natural environments to ensure the best quality of life for all of our residents. We are also highly focused on seeking investment in our city from external sources, which include both the state and federal government and also the private sector. And we also are looking to find innovative and new ways to deliver our services to the community. Our budget planning continues to reflect council's commitment to operate in a financially responsible and of course sustainable manner in what we all know is a great cat environment. Save this word, oh, here you go. So, this budget really reflects our community's input and council's ongoing determination to create a vibrant and harmonious Brimbank. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all of the members of our community who in one way or another have provided us with guidance in developing our budget. When we asked the Brimbank community what their priorities were for the budget, they particularly highlighted areas such as waste management, emergency and disaster management, elderly support services, local streets and footpaths, with parks and play spaces higher up on the list as well, sealed local roads, community decisions, family support services such as maternal-child health, population growth, traffic management, enforcement of local laws came through very, very strongly. So did environmental sustainability, disadvantaged support services. And of course, all of those items gave us lots to work with when we were putting this budget together. So, just for the accountants in the room, I'm putting my hand up, looking to my left. We're just going to have a quick look at the top line figures. So, we have quite a large budget. The total budget for 1920 is $285.3 million and our total operating expenditure is $199.5 million. The total budget dedicated to capital works is $85.8 million and we'll talk more about that in a minute, because that is essentially the cornerstone of our plans for the coming year, which is capital, uh, capital works. And grants for the 2019-2020 year include $27.7 million in operating grants and $1.5 million for capital grants. So, this slide is actually a really, really good slide to talk about how the rates are spent and how every dollar is part of, every hundred dollars in youth paying rates is spent. So, above all, what the chart highlights is that council's many commitments and initiatives and the diverse way of activities that this council undertake and allow for to ensure that our community is happy and healthy and enjoys a great quality of life. As you can see, the highest chunk coming in at $38.95 for every hundred dollars is capital works. That follows closely by council operations and number three is parks, gardens and environment, which take up $9.60, so almost 10% of the rates that are coming through. Coming in at number four is age, disability, family and youth services and they are really at the heart of what we deliver as a council and are absolutely vital to our community. And number five is our arts and culture initiatives, which also include our wonderful libraries, which are some of the true meeting places of this municipality. And we have so many people using our wonderful libraries across the municipality. But what I think you all agree with is that this council aims to enrich both the physical and mental wellbeing of our residents in a range of ways. And this community-first principle has been reflected in our 1920 budget and has in the last two budgets that we've been putting together. Rates are of course a main income stream for this council and they're vital to ensuring that council achieves all the services and delivers for the community. The key takeout and message to the rate base as part of this budget is that in 1920, 72% of Brimbank residential properties will receive a decrease in their rates. They will get a smaller rate bill than they had previous years, which is a really, really great story for us to be able to tell. The draft, the draft budget also proposes a new rates differential for commercial and industrial land or vacant lands, which will be implemented. And the new differential is intended to encourage the development of commercial and industrial land, thereby reducing the problems which can be associated with vacant lands such as illegal rubbish dumping, which is of course costing us a huge amount of money each year and is an absolute bugbear of our residents. So, the new differential, the new rates differential will mean that these properties contribute a greater share of the overall rates that council collects, but it will not increase the total amount of money that council collects in terms of rates. Instead, it will mean that other ratable properties attract a lower proportion of rates. Capital works, so as I spoke about before, this budget includes a significant capital works allocation of $85.8 million. It's a substantial increase on what we spent last year, which was $59.6 million and it's all about strengthening and enhancing our city. Capital works spending is detailed in this chart and we'll talk more about that in a minute. But in order to refund the extensive level of capital works and to improve the city's aging infrastructure, council will take out loans to the effect of $20.2 million. This is necessary for us to keep up with the community requirements, but it's also consistent with the financial prudence that council exercises at all times. When we talk about future capital works, the Melbourne Airport Rally League, which we all know, we had Scott Morrison and Daniel Andrews out a couple of weeks ago signing the heads of agreement. This will be a once-in-a-generation opportunity for our municipality and it has the potential to transform our city and create unprecedented employment, investment and economic opportunities. Investment in our city is a topic that I'm particularly passionate about and I've dedicated myself during my time as mayor to talking to a wide range of people from all walks of life about ways in which we can attract new business and new innovation to Brimbank. This city really has a great future and I can tell you that's been echoed in all walks of life for many, many people outside of Brimbank. I'm going to talk a little bit about capital works highlights and I'm sure my councillor group will also be happily talking about these, but some of the ones in a snapshot, we're saying $32 million is what we're spending on sport facility upgrades in the new budget, $25.8 million on road and footpath improvements, $1.7 million on bikes and shared cars, $5.4 million on town centre upgrades, $1.9 million on sustainability projects and, this is my daughter's favourite, $4.9 million on playgrounds, parks and gardens throughout Brimbank. So, what all this adds up to is that we're creating a better quality of life for the Brimbank community, better recreational facilities, better scrapes, more efficient and enjoyable ways to get around the city and all with an eye towards sustainability, both in the near and long-term future. A little bit about our capital works. So, there's sports facility upgrades and enhancements, where we've allocated $32 million of our budget. So, the highlights of this allocation include, we're building three new sports pavilions. We're building bike paths and shared paths to connect our city and we are upgrading a number of playgrounds and parks and gardens, including the continuation of the Lakes Reserve flagship park in Taylor's Lakes and the redevelopment of MB Leach Memorial Gardens in Sunshine. And there are a number of other parks which I'm sure all the councillors will touch on shortly. So, work continues on, also continues on developing one of the most important projects that we've ever undertaken as a council and something that we are all around this table very, very passionate about and that is the redevelopment of the St Norbin's Letter Centre. We're turning the current centre into a state-of-the-art health and wellbeing hub and we're combining a new weather and aquatic facility, a new community centre and a range of health and social services for the community and that's all going to be under one roof. It's an innovative product programme, which we're very, very pleased to be providing to our community. We've provided funding in the 1920 budget for further development of this facility and also in the long-term financial plan, we've allowed for the construction. So, this is happening. Capital works, so town centres, open spaces. Capital works, so town centres, open spaces and streetscape projects form a significant part of our capital works programme for 1920 and the budget highlights include, of course, the Sunshine Town Centre, which is the Hampshire Road Master Plan, stage three construction. I'm sure you all came through the roadworks down the road. We've got the construction of the Alfreda Street Civic Plaza and we also have various other activity centres improvements that are coming along. We aim to improve the quality of life for our residents through making the places and spaces where they spend a lot of their time more pleasant, more enjoyable and more user-friendly. We've done a great deal in this area over the last few years and our capital works budget for the coming year will allow for more improvements to enhance our community's day-to-day experiences in this great city of Brimbank. So this slide really demonstrates that this council's commitment to enhancing our city as a great place to live knows no boundaries. We are doing works all across Brimbank and this snapshot shows just that. And the thing to remember here is that these are just some of the projects that council is working on. It's important to remember too that all of the day-to-day services, which reach every corner of our city from waste management to elderly and disadvantaged support services also continue across the map. So that's a really significant piece of work with these capital projects across the board. So the next step, so I just want to cover off on the process and the stages of the budget process. So if the draft budget is adopted this evening, it will go to public exhibition, then both it and the feedback information will go live on the council's website this Thursday, the 11th of April. On the 27th of May, there will be an opportunity for the Budget Committee, sorry, that date was Thursday then, Tuesday the 17th? Thursday the 18th, sorry, not the 11th. On the 27th of May, there'll be an opportunity for the Budget Committee to hear from submitters after they've put through their thoughts on the budget. On the 23rd of June, the draft budget, including any changes from the exhibition, will go to the council meeting for adoption and then on the 28th of June, the adoption budget will go live on our website and two days after, we will provide that to the Minister of Local Government, which we are required to do. So I'd just like to close this presentation by emphasising that the community has been at the heart of everything that this council does. We're looking at the long-term health and wellbeing of our community, we've invited community consultation and we've taken out significant community engagement in developing this budget. We've celebrated the diversity of our community through many events and initiatives that the council undertakes and that includes $600,000 towards the community invest programme, which is allocated next year. It's a significant investment. Council remains absolutely committed to ensuring that Brimbank is managing in a financially sustainable and responsible way, which allows the greatest opportunities for development of infrastructure and services and attracts external investment of the highest calibre. There are significant health and social challenges to be addressed and these are also reflected in our budget planning and allocation. Finally, our current council is absolutely united in its determination to advocate at a state and federal level to ensure that Brimbank not only gets a fair go, but enjoys a happy, healthy and prosperous future as the heart of the West. So thank you, I look forward to all the great things that we're going to do in 1920 and I'll put the budget forward through the councillors. So thank you. Okay, so councillors, what I might do now, ask if there are any questions or points of clarification in relation to the budget. Councillor Langish, do you have a question? No? Okay. Councillors, are there any questions in relation to the budget? Question?
Yes, Madam Mayor. In our amended motions, we have different timelines than the ones on the screen. So for instance, the community consultation invites a distribution until the 24th of May.
We haven't got to that motion yet, so we'll comment on that as that comes up. So councillor Langish, do you have a motion?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and congratulations on that presentation, it's excellent. The amended motion is that council, in accordance with sections 1, 2, 7 and 2, 3 of the Local Government Act 1989, a, amend the draft annual budget 2019-2020 and attachment 1 to this report to include an allocation of $300,000 for site visibility and due diligence investigations related to the home football Matildas bid. B, endorse the release of the draft annual budget 2019-2020, including draft long-term financial plan 2019 to 2029 and draft rating strategy 2019-2020 for community consultation and invites written submissions until the 24th of May 2019. It's public notice, seeking written submissions on the draft annual budget 2019-2020, including draft long-term financial plan 2019 to 2029 and draft rating strategy 2019-2020 in the Herald Sun and on the council's website. Appoints councillor, resident of Hambree as chair and all councillors as members to a hearing of submissions committee to hear any submitters requesting to be heard in support of their written submission on the draft annual budget 2019-2020, including draft long-term financial plan 2019 to 2029 and draft rating strategy 2019 to 2020. Sets the hearing of submissions committee meeting to be held on 6pm on Monday, the 3rd of June 2019, in the council chamber, Brimbank Community and Civic Centre, 301 Hampshire Road, Sunshine. And if required, sets a further meeting to be held at 6pm on Wednesday, the 5th of June 2019, at the Peelah Community Hub 2004 Old Collar Highway. And item F, receives a further report outlining any submissions received on the draft annual budget 2019-2020, including draft long-term financial plan 2019 to 2029 and draft rating strategy 2019 to 2020, including a report on the hearing of submissions committee proceedings and summary of hearings and resetting for a final draft annual budget 2019-2020, including a final draft long-term financial plan 2019 to 2029 and a final draft rating strategy 2019 to 2020 for consideration.
Thank you councillor Langish. Is there a second to this motion? Councillor Allen? Do you think I'd like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We of course had a recent initiative for the Matildas bid, which missed the, because of it being recent, missed the annual budget process. We have all seen the existing announcement in the Star Weekly relating to, which of course was that front page news, very exciting, with council putting up its hand to become the house, the home of the Matildas. Competition for this exciting opportunity will be fierce, with seven councillors vying for the honour of being the home for the Matildas. The facility will include a $60 million to $70 million to $80 million elite training base for our national women's soccer team. We have submitted an expression of interest for this amazing opportunity. In Brimbank, we have a number of suitable sites for the Matildas home base. To meet this bid, we need to demonstrate that we are the best location. This is much more than offering a site or sites and lodging an EOI. We need to demonstrate that these sites are suitable and appropriate for the Matildas. To achieve this, a number of studies and planning investigations may be required, including environmental studies, cultural heritage management plans, site soil investigation, traffic planning, to name a few. Some of this work can be done in-house, however, some will require specialists. It is important that we demonstrate that we have prepared, for the many, sorry, it's important that we demonstrate that we are prepared to put our money where our mouth is in terms of lodging this bid. Having been involved in the preparation and assessment of bids in my previous career, I know that having a toolkit full is essential to producing a winning bid and that includes giving great sites for this facility and also a clear commitment to undertake the work needed to make our preferred site shine red. Let's hope that we can change our new logo in the future and become from a, we are the, we are Brimbank, home of the Matildas. I would therefore recommend this amended motion to my fellow councillors and hope that we can bring the Matildas to Brimbank. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Langish. Is there a second to speak? Councillor Allen?
Thank you. Just to say, it's pretty simple. For me, it's a no-brainer. It allocates that amount of money so that whatever we want to do, we have the flexibility to do it. You know, we don't know what's going to happen, we don't know what's going to come up, it might be used, it might not, but as I said, it gives us that flexibility to do it. If we hadn't known about it earlier, of course it would be, but as such, it's coming in as an amendment. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Allen. Councillors, is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against this motion? Councillor Judich?
I also commend councillor Langish on his initiative this evening, Madam Mayor. I don't believe that this council was ready to actually do that kind of work. We have two sites that were mentioned, those two sites are nowhere near, nowhere near having done any work on them. The Matildas are a highly successful soccer team, they have highly successful sponsors to the tune of Chelsea, Foxconn, Cartex, Qantas, Fox Sports, Rebel, Nike, NAB, Hyundai and Bet365. They have lots of money under their belt. I don't think that this council should be looking at anything like that right now. We need more clarity around what is required and I would expect that with the federal election coming up and with the state election just being held, perhaps the state and federal governments would like to handle the ball on this issue. So I am not going to be supporting the amended motion, thank you.
Thank you councillor Judich. Councillor Tacos?
Madam Mayor, I'm speaking against it also. Our commitment in this council is to our community and to our clubs whilst I endorse elite sports and I think it's wonderful and as councillor Judich mentioned, these elite sports clubs do have a lot of strong sponsorship behind them. Our clubs, as we've inherited, have been lagging behind in infrastructure and we've seen some of these clubs and we've seen the state they're in and quite frankly, they're condemnable, some of them, but we are moving as a council, as we have seen the budget, we've made a $32 million commitment to improve and bring these clubs up, whether it's improving by adding female-friendly facilities, that $300,000 is for our community and it belongs in our community. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tacos. Councillor Headet, do you like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support much of what's been said, you call me, I'm speaking against the motion from my chairman councillor this year for his initiative. I think there does need to be feasibility work done and then due diligence investigations if we are successful. I'm waiting though for a briefing on the Matildas bid, I'm waiting for a briefing on the Sibum Park future use, I'm waiting for a briefing on Energy Park and I'm waiting for a briefing on the funding of feasibility study for the Sunshine Measure Centre, I'm waiting for a briefing on the feasibility study to be done for various areas around town, I'm waiting for information about how we're going to fund the raft of different community infrastructure and sporting infrastructure to the plans we've just developed. I commend councillor Langish though for his initiative. It is good to be thinking ahead on this, if we were successful, what would we do? For me, if we were successful and we were a winning bidder, I think this council can swing to action very quickly. We have a big, as you just mentioned, $200 million operating budget, $85 million capital works budget. Things move around year to year, there is quite some of that, there will be an opportunity to find $300,000 somewhere if it's needed. I think we need to take that as the way forward. While we have our briefings, while we understand what's being asked of us here, I don't know the business plan for this particular stadium, I'm hearing it's to be funded by others, I'm hearing it's to be funded by us. I'm not sure what's going on. Until we have a briefing on all this, I'm in the dark. So for me, going now with $300,000 in the budget, we can use it for a range of alternative uses that have been mentioned by various councillors, I think that's the way to go right now. Let's wait and see what comes with the EOI bid, let's wait and see what comes from the briefing sorting out that next week. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Headet. Councillors, is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against this motion? None? Councillor Langish? As people spoke against your motion, you have the opportunity to sum up before I put to the vote.
Just to sum up, Madam Mayor, my experience in town planning and civil engineering and local government consulting is that these studies take a long time. If we diminish our bid for the Matildas by not going forward with this ability to do this work and if we wait until we get some indication, then of course, the whole process becomes very lengthy. If we have a clear indication of a preferred site from the sites we have and if we have a clear indication that we are, we will need to undertake this work and have the money in the budget and do it quickly because the, as I said, my experience is that many of these studies are very long-term things and if we don't do this, we actually, I'm hoping that we'll be detrimental to our likely success of our bid. So I would again encourage councillors to think about making sure at least the money is there to give us the best chance in our bid process. So thank you very much, Madam.
Thank you councillor Langish. So that ends debate. So I'll put the item to the vote. All those in favour? All those against? Lost. So councillors, we go back to the report. Is there a move of our motion? Councillor Tacos?
Madam Mayor, I'm happy to move the report for the draft budget. Thank you.
Councillor Tacos, you just need to appoint a chair of the 2, 3 committee, item C.
I would like to appoint the mayor as the chair. Thank you. Thank you councillor Tacos. Do I have a second for that motion? Councillor David and councillor Tacos, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I would like to highlight some of the, to endorse the draft budget, but also like to highlight some of the great capital works projects supported by this budget for us tonight. $32 million on sports facilities, including the very exciting stage two of the Errington Precinct Master Plan, which, and also the replacement of the St Norbin's Leisure Centre Incorporated and the new sports pavilions that my fellow councillors will also talk more about in their words. $4.9 million on parks, playgrounds and open spaces is just phenomenal. This council continues to support a strong community sports and recreation and cultural infrastructure programme because that is what our community wants and needs to help it to grow and thrive along with our excellent award-winning libraries and community hubs, which provide excellent books, programmes, classes and opportunities for people to connect and engage. We will continue to listen to our community through the draft process when it goes out and submission, we welcome everyone to put in their submissions during the submission period to build on our community-first council that is committed to every individual in our community having opportunities to thrive. I also commend that 75% of our residents will receive lower rates. It is showing that we are committed to equity in this council. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tacos. Councillor David, would you like to speak as a second up?
Just to say, Madam Mayor, that the budget this year was shared accordingly and that we're here at the House of Warr, we're lucky enough to have a number of islands that we've been taking care of, like the Moor Park idea, the new pavilion there, Hampshire Road, of course, the City Green Sunshine, redevelopment of the Leach Memorial Gardens and of course, the Parrot Improv's Tower Tower, New Tonsham West. But all in all, I think the budget has been shared accordingly and I think it's well done by the council, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor David. Councillors, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Councillor Headet?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to also respond by thanking the officers for the enormous amount of work that's gone on. I think we started early this year and we've done a lot of talking, a lot of discussing and a lot of considering and analysing and so on and there are different opinions and I know that I've had one of those and I've talked a little bit about that. This particular budget, $200 million operating budget, it's a big budget and innovation and I guess new ways of doing business will be really important going forward. I went to a conference the other day about artificial intelligence and the changing nature of work and it is upon us. So as a council... So as a council, I think we need to be thinking about that and we need to be thinking about how we work together and share service models with other councils. We haven't talked a lot about that this year, but we have been in past years and for me, there's a whole piece of work that needs to be considered around that going forward. Some of the takeouts for the budget, for me, as councillor David said, we've had those four Capital Works initiatives that you mentioned, one of the striking features in your presentation was that there was one and a half million dollars' worth of Capital Works grants. I think we have acknowledged, all of us this year, that we've had a pretty raw deal in terms of grants from state and federal governments and that we really do need them if we're going to lift this community out of the position that prides itself on the seat of scale into a higher order of being. We need everyone's support to do that and at the moment, we're not getting it. I think we also need to talk a little bit about the Prince of Sundal Community Park contribution to the budget, it's come in this year through Lynch's Garden, $800,000 and various other Capital Works there. This is $4.2 million that the community lobbied state government for way back when Sundal was being built and a lot of land wasn't available and those funds are now being used to fund Capital Works around the area. So congratulations only to the Prince of Sundal Community Park for their assistance to council in pulling that funding together some time back. I'd also like to make some comment around the, I guess, the long-term financial plan. We mentioned, you mentioned in your presentation about the importance of prudence and I don't think anyone will disagree with that. We know that on the horizon, there's all sorts of external forces always floating around that may have an influence on our budget and they're there alive and well. There are others that we do know about and we may know about in the next few months that we have to think about as well. But for me, I think prudence could have been a little bit more than what we've done. My viewers have expressed openly and loudly around the council table, it could have been here, is that we should be going beyond the low medium risk threshold in our long-term financial plan, up one notch to the medium-high threshold, given the state of this community, the need for infrastructure and community infrastructure, the need for programs. If we're ever going to lift this community, we have to take a risk.
Extension for one minute?
If ever we're going to lift this community, we need investment in all sorts of things and some of it needs to be ours, we need to be able to show governments and show other financial funding partners that we are taking a risk with some of this, that we are putting our necks on the line for our community. And whilst we don't want to be imprudent, we want to be prudent, I think we can do more than that. That's my personal view, it's not one that's shared by the rest of the council and I appreciate that and I'm a member of the council and I acknowledge that. But I think over time, if we can develop a better collaboration with our federal and state partners, if we can get some more political capital, if we can get some better connections with, I guess, all sorts of other funding bodies, that will help us quite a bit. But we are a community in itself and that's a lot on the line, but we are doing a lot and there's a lot of really brilliant work being done here by all the officers and the councillors together and I commend them all for that. When you look the scale of the scrap of it and what's been done, you can say nothing but wow. So well done everyone and look forward to the hearing pool. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hitt. Councillor Borg, did you want to?
Thank you, madam mayor. As a ward councillor for Grassland, together with my colleagues councillor Conroy and councillor Anpham, I would like to highlight some of the projects that have been, the funding of which has been allocated through this budget plan. And these include the visibility study and cost estimates of the Deer Park library. Now, this is a highly needed facility, the current library is quite small and it's very much stretched to its limits to meeting the needs of the community in that area. It's perhaps worth also mentioning the gentrification that will be happening in some years ahead of us and it's important that we, as a community, be prepared for this gentrification and make sure that this part of the community's needs are very much met, especially with regards to education. Perhaps it's also worth mentioning that this area is one of the hospitals that is being identified as a disadvantaged part of the community in Brimbank. So this feasibility study is highly appreciated. Besides that, there is also the new sports pavilion at Mont Thomas Reserve Deer Park, the female sports facility upgrade, Robert Bruce, change rooms, Orbin Vale, the neighbourhood park upgrade programme, Moreland Park, Kelly, and the new shared user park connecting King's Road interchange to Organ Pipes National Park, Keylor Park and also Westway Community Centre upgrade existing power mains to centre. So these are very exciting time for us and like my colleagues, my colleague councillors, I'd like to thank this staff and other councillors for having worked together on this great piece of work. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Borg. Councillor Judicch?
Do you like to, madam mayor? Madam mayor, I'd like to commend the budget to everyone and I'm pleased to also see that the St Albans Leisure Centre is moving ahead with a nice hefty sum decided, so I'm very pleased about that. As all councillors would be very pleased to note that that is actually going ahead now in the community, of course, seeing it in the budget, but that figure decided would also be very pleased. We also have a pavilion in Tallahay Reserve, we have stage three of the Lakes Reserve, we have a shared user park connecting King's Road to the Organ Pipes, just to mention a few projects in their tailors ward. Also must mention, madam mayor, the council has discussed at length the long-term financial plan and has updated it to ensure a solid financial foundation. Capital Works will continue to be delivered even though a potential risk for cost blowouts because of contractor availability may actually happen. Nonetheless, council will continue to find great opportunities and be more efficient in its delivery of services, programmes and building of infrastructure. I look forward to hearing from our community in the 223 hearings and as we like to say here in Brimbank, to the community, have your say. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Judicch. Councillor Papafolio?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'll try and not repeat what's been repeated. I fully endorse the draft annual budget 2019-20 for the community consultation. I personally believe it's the best draft annual budget we have put forward to Brimbank community during our term as councillors. We as councillors have prioritised the needs of Brimbank. With a rate cap of 2.5% and a focus on reducing operating costs, this draft annual budget is delivering what the community needs now. I commend the work of councillor Stan and the work councillors are putting for this draft budget. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Papafolio. Councillor Fan?
Thanks, ma'am. I think running any other year, this, I'm so much excited on our annual budget for 2019 and 20, which council initiated for this year, which include complete schedule upgrade to the East Sunshine and South Sunshine Community Gardens as per the Brimbank Community Services and Infrastructure Plan. Examine council rose models for community managed gardens and community need via the community garden facility study. Expand the delivery of multicultural arts and storytelling programme in libraries, arts facility and/or neighbourhood houses. Establish partnership in the planning and delivery of needs by on activities and programme that aim to support men's health. Celebrate and promote Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander art and culture through the commissioning of indigenous art in council chamber. Undertake local resident research into homelessness in Brimbank. Increase resources to plan, co-assign and deliver low-cost and low-cost activities at neighbourhood houses that support the challenging themes of belonging and learning of goals. Develop a strategy that supports greater collaboration between community managed and council-supported neighbourhood houses. At reading through this list, I can't believe that there are something that we hear from community and Brimbank into the chamber, or we feel that it needed to be done and it's actually coming to real life and that's the difference. Being outside of council and being in the chamber, same thing and seeing it starting to form, I am so excited and very, you know, much waiting for many, many more new projects in the budget.
Thank you councillor Fan. Councillor, is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against budget? No? Okay, I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, now we're going to move on to item 12.2, which I suspect, there's a few people here that don't wear the fob. It's quite popular. So item 12.2 is the Vietnamese heritage flag, the Coban flag. And councillors, do I have any questions or quick points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a mover? Councillor Fan?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to move the report that council recognised the Vietnamese heritage flag, knowing that the Coban flag is a symbol of the Vietnamese Australian community and their refugee experience. They approved the Coban flag to be flown during times of special significant to the Australian Vietnamese community. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Fan. Is there a second for the motion? Councillor Trong? And councillor Fan, if there's a mover, would you like to speak to this motion?
Yes, ma'am. As the last council meeting, when I moved in on this motion, I speak about my, what I heard from my auntie's experience that she would never travel by sea because she was so scared that, you know, she was going to drown or whatever reason it is that in her obsession of just giving gold somewhere by boat as she came here to Beijing. But today just came out of, I would be lying by saying something down without my own experience or my own feeling. My name is Yuna and I was told by many people back home, because I was born and grew up in Vietnam and was studied in Vietnam, and it was told that my name was the name of an author who drew a book. Nonetheless, I, and it was right to me, then I go through the whole country looking for that book under my name to read, could not find it. And I asked the question, why was that? They could not answer and would not clear answer, it just that, not a valid book. When I came to Australia, first I found the book under the author name was my name in this Royal Library, that's when I first started to read it. Then I asked people, why was this book being published, given to people when I was there to read? They said, under communist regime, it's not allowed. So what I guess was, when I was living in Australia, I had the privilege of being able to, of freedom of speech, freedom of saying what I think or read what people believe or listen to what people think or believe, as it is freedom. So under, and because of that, under request of Vietnamese, Australian Vietnamese community in Victoria and many others from your group in support, raising the issue that we should recognise the Coban flag, which is a Vietnamese yellow flag, as a symbol of freedom, symbol of their identity and brownness to, toward the culture. In support of that, we have received letter of support from Australian Vietnamese community in Victoria. We also have a list, a long list of support, supporting letter from, number one, he could born with president Vietnamese community in Australia National. Number two, Venerable Thich Phu Thong, Quang Ngoc Thang would write book. Number three, Victor Khan Trung, president Vietnamese Catholic community in Melbourne. Number four, Victor Cho Hwan Bu, president Vietnamese Buddhist congregation, not Sunshine. Number five, Dan Hye, president Vietnamese Veteran Association of Victoria, this grand. Number six, Victor Quan Trung, Brimbank Vietnamese Aid Care Association, great book. Number seven, Victor Lee Ba Fu, principal Hong Bang Vietnamese Language School Deer Park. Number eight, Victor Thai Duck Miu, lab Hong Vietnamese language center, St Albans, this grand. Number nine, Victor Long Wen, Vinsu Radio Deer Park. Number ten, Miss Tier Two, FM 88.9 Radio Deer Park. Number eleven, Victor Young Nguyen, co-founder, Dinh Hung Online. Number twelve, Victor Jung Lee, CEO Hollywood News Richmond. Number thirteen, Victor Chris Nguyen, group leader, Chong Chon Da Scout Group, St Albans. Number fourteen, Victor Neil Ta, Kaba School Music, St Albans. Number fifteen, Victor Tang Nguyen, secretary, Vietnamese Table Tennis Association of Victoria, St Albans. Number sixteen, Victor Gary Colin, president Sunshine Airlines, Sunshine. Number seventeen, the Thai Nguyen, president bonsai Club Association, not Sunshine. Number eighteen, Victor Twan Han, BM up, 50 up clubs. And moreover, we also recently received-
Sorry councillor Fan, we've sit down for two minutes please.
Thank you. And especially recently, we just received a letter from the Horn Valley Calgary Stadium for copyright to send a letter of support in the Coban flag as well. So at Brimbank, the city has to meet significant portion of the Australian or Vietnamese background. According to the 2016 census, over 13% of Brimbank are of Vietnamese ancestry and over 17% of population have at least one parent who was born in Vietnam. Therefore, I calling on federal council to support this, the recognition of the Coban flag. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Fan. And with the second, I'd like to speak, councillor Trong? You understanding or not well?
Good. Sorry about my voice. Due here from the council of Warr, we have a lot of support from the member or different organisation about the Coban flag. I just would like to, council of Warr, we mentioned, in Brimbank, we have the high population of the Vietnamese. We have 16.2%, it means about 31,453 Vietnamese people still, um, have been there at home. We have 5,634 people, it means about 2.9%. Brit is about 5,288, it's mean 2.7. Maltese is 5,056 people, it's mean about 2.7. And Italian is about 4,906, it's about 2.5. That is the top, it's a member of the community in our area. And you can hear it, how the council of Warr is there, and I would like to tell you, it's like with the Vietnamese history, we have the Chinese group Vietnam with a thousand year and ten Vietnamese under in 100 years from fair, could learn a group. The British people, no one British royals could leave the country, but after 30 of airport, 90- but after thirty of April nineteen seventy-five, when it's five on four, it's a million, a million people in the Camp Vietnam. Why they did not, they not a big? Because they just want to encamp community. They British royals to let behind their parents, family, friends, processor, ancestor, in Indian way to encamp community to improve their life. They try to escape by boats or by working through the discouraged to the other dangerous country due to the number of people trying to encamp Vietnam. At during this time, we have the sentence, if the street life had the less, they will leave Vietnam. Over five hundred people died on the sea or in the polar and tend to escape communist leaving anything in their homeland.
Sorry, Council Trum, just granting extension of time for two minutes, please. Thank you.
So, well again, I would like to share with you my story. I am a boss person. I kept Vietnam, eh, along with a thousand of our people. I had to buy the fog Chinese nationality at the bar from the Ming High in the city located at Shrao and Vietnam in May nineteen seventy-nine. My boss debauched with two other boats, which my boat containing about five hundred six people. Right after the debauch, we experienced very bad weather with the thunder torn and rainy and stop, I was sheltered in Hong Po Island. To other sea continued to journey. One of the shipping ship with many drought, with bloody body along the coast of the Carmouche. My mother knew about it terribly and didn't know if any of bloody body is were mine. At this time, people were not allowed to leave a residence without the permit from the local government. So, my mom had to sleep outside of the bus station for nearly two months and travel in different area just only to find my body. During this time, many other boats with many people drowned, so my mother spent many day during the day searching for my body and sleep at the bus station during the night time. If she hear someone told her the body found about five hundred kilometer away, she would go there to see if were my body, even in Ya Chan or Hung Tao. Not only my mother, but many other mother are also willing to spend their children with the annual journey to encamp the community.
Sorry, Council Trum, another extension of time, two minutes, please. Thank you.
I can ensure with you, such the Vietnamese community government, if not they override the demographic election, with any Vietnamese citizen having right to vote, it would be many part, it would be many party and the rest of Vietnam, the police would be lie over the sky of Vietnam. Therefore, all the Vietnamese referee, there is only one common speaker to know in other and where any younger generation. Our dessert then will let know the symbol of the Vietnam referee with the yellow flag of the Republic Vietnam. Sometime now, when I show on the Facebook, internet or the Vietnamese newspaper, I found the announcement to find some of the boys, mother, sister from some family because we read TikTok. When they left Vietnam since nineteen seventy-eight to nineteen eighty-three, when many the woman were pirate, tried either of captors and USS select or kill it. I write. When I too, I could be die like him in the sea and I know how lucky I were. After six time, my boat have tried pirate, stealing anything in my boats, lost the machine motor, when the storm leave my boat to the dispersed island. With our food, fact with very hot weather during the day and too cold in the night. Mostly, all of us have to bring sea water until the UNESCO file and take her to the referee camp in Malaysia. Finally, eventually to settle in Australia to rebuild my life with other member in my community in this wonderful country. But still now, do you know, after forty-four year, some of the families still hope to look for their loved relative. My colleagues, councillor. Many people still suffer from trauma and depression after they encamp from Vietnam and try hard to write up to be in a lot of things for this country, like volunteer work and donate their charity. Recently, at a moment, we donate to build John Keener Woman and Children Hospital with over three hundred thousand. Australia, to be righteous is important for you to remember the contribution they make from the member living and running business in the city of Brimbank. To have easy, have trading path and suffering and recognize all their hard working contribute to the city of Brimbank, I would like to read message and read way that you understand our situation and what be important for the Vietnamese resident living and doing business in local, in your matters. The cultural, we recommend my South Vietnam Yellow Flag for the referee.
Thank you, Council Trum. And, uh, Council Tapos, she's to speak.
Thank you, Madam May. Thank you to Council Fan and Council Trum for speaking from their heart on, on the importance of the, and the meaning of this flag. Madam May, the Coban Flag is a significant part of the identity of many Vietnamese people living in Australia. Indeed, in Brimbank, uh, from when I was, um, attending high school in Richmond, uh, I remember the story of the arrival of the refugees there seeking safe haven here from the chaos of war and, and the traumatic stories and, um, the tremendous resilience they showed, uh, even back then. But here I am in Brimbank, uh, with one of the largest Vietnamese populations and I'm proud to say that I support this motion. Um, for those with ties to the former South Vietnam, um, this symbolizes what they see as their fight for democracy and freedom against communist forces led by former North Vietnam. The Vietnam War ended in nineteen seventy-five with the defeat of South Vietnam leading to a massive refugee, uh, crisis with comparisons to today's humanitarian crisis that we see in Europe of people trying to escape the horror of war. Australia embraced, uh, the Vietnamese, as so many of us here are migrants from similar stories. The multicultural area around Brimbank and Melbourne's Inner West holds a special place for the Vietnamese community's resettlement. In the years that followed, uh, in the years that have followed. In summary, Madam May, the Coban Flag is not a sovereign flag, but it is a symbol of identity and particularly the identity of the Australian Vietnamese community and their refugee experience. And for many, it symbolizes not only identity, it symbolizes their aspirations. Uh, people have left their home country in such traumatic and difficult circumstances to resettle successfully. And, um, the stories from my own colleague councillors and residents in my own ward have told me how they fled risking their lives, their family lives on boats and making that journey seeking safety and peace away from persecution and seeking democracy and the freedom of speech as mentioned. And that is in essence of what the Coban Flag represents in my mind. Um, I'm a strong supporter that we fly it and that, uh, as, as a part of it.
And I thank you, Council Trum, for their stories. Thank you. Thank you, Council Tapos. Um, Council Papafotia, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Madam May. A flag is a sacred item that holds great significance. Countries spend many hours and a lot of money on their design because a flag is a country's way of portraying itself to the rest of the world. In Brimbank, we have over a hundred and sixty different nationalities, which means we have over a hundred and sixty official flags. Each culture has significant day where their official flag could be flown and recognized. I have high respect for our Vietnamese community and recognize the struggles that you've been through, like many, many other cultures in our municipality. But I will have to abstain from voting today, which means I cannot, cannot vote for, but I won't vote against this recommendation. What we start doing for one culture within our municipality, we must do for all the other cultures. I have concerns as once we start flying one flag, it may create political issues with other cultures within our community. The Department of the Prime Minister and Cabinet has a handbook called Australian Flags. There are protocols listed for the appropriate use and the flying of a flag. The Australian Government policy in relation to the flying of other nations' flags is to fly only the official flags of nations recognized by Australia. The policy discourages councils from flying flags that are not official flags of recognized nations. These are my reasons for abstaining today and I believe I'm putting the wider community first, so I hope you understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Papafotia. Council, is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against? Council Judith Chev?
Yes, Madam May.
Excuse me, sorry, gallery, please. Need some quiet from the gallery, thank you.
Madam May, protocols will say that the Coban Flag is not an official flag and therefore should not be flown. However, the Vietnamese community being the largest in Brimbank, especially the Vietnamese involved in the various organizations mentioned in the report, also by Council of Farm and various other community organizations that I am aware of, certainly deserve for the Coban Flag to be flown during times of special significance. I therefore support the motion, congratulate the Vietnamese community on their contribution to our community and indeed to our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Judith Chev. Council Hittich?
Thank you, Madam May. I stand in support of the motion. Uh, I speak to it, uh, in the following way. Um, Australia, uh, most times is a very tolerant and inclusive nation. Brimbank is even more so. I think we've seen that around our community on many, many occasions, that tolerance and inclusivity, inclusivity are features where we take on board people from all communities and welcome. We are Brimbank. I guess my experience with the Vietnamese refugee situation was back in the mid-seventies. I married here at L.A.'s in Sunshine and went off to Canberra to live. And within three years, we built our new house and started raising a family and, and our local church, the local priest stood up and said, "We've got a whole lot of Vietnamese refugees arriving here. Can we take them in?" And the community, we built them. We took them in and we supported it. And the Vietnamese community, as I see it, has supported us as a, as a nation and as a, as a city here in Brimbank, as it is. So for me, uh, I see the call for the flying of the Coban as a call to fly a flag that's not a national flag. It's, uh, it's not one that represents the South Vietnamese nation, but what it does represent is the heritage of history of that country. What I see is a, a, a group of people who've come here and contributed as Council Good Chek has said, and Council Tapos has said, and Council Fan and Council Trum have put so diligently over the weeks to us and briefing us on this. And I see that we have a, a need to provide a, a sense with a place where people from the Vietnamese community here locally can come and stand and remember and remember the people that have gone before them, remember their own experiences and remember how good it was and how good it is and how good it will be in the future. And for me, uh, the flying of the Coban Flag represents no more than that. It is no threat to a nation, it is no threat to a state or a country. It is a celebration of heritage and history and for that reason alone, I stand in support.
Thank you, Council Hittich. Council David, you need to speak.
Thank you, Madam May. I can tell you that I'm pretty attracted, uh, my little friends here. And while I'm alive, to acknowledge that Fan and we face this hook game. Council of Brimbank, former mayor of Brimbank, and he's here with us to know amongst our friends. And I got to know the Vietnamese community coming from Vietnam in the early seventies in my previous profession. I was a real estate agent and I worked very, very well with them at that time. And I found them one of the best prosperous communities that landed in Australia. Very prosperous indeed, good workers. Um, when Council of Farm and of course Council of Trum spoke to us a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago, in reference to this, I thought, oh, how can this happen? And they explained to us that it's not just the, um, because of the original flag. This is a sentimental kind of, uh, of flag that they want to use in various occasions when it's near. And I understand their feeling behind the, the yellow flag, the Van, the gold, the Coban Flag. Uh, there is something that they, uh, it's a precise, precise to them. And I, I fully support them. Uh, support them because they, uh, I watch and learn their stories in reference to the horrific or perhaps suffering journey to Australia. And for them people, uh, we support all the way.
Thank you, Council David. Are there any other councillors that would like to speak for or against? Is Arsha? No? Council Fan, someone spoke against you, Arsha, you have the right of reply.
Yes. Standing as a councillor in local government, we act on what we, our people want and need. And this is what our people want. They ask us to do it, not for me, not for anyone here, but for the community. That's, that's what we act on. Based on the draft flat protocol and policy, um, two thousand and eighteen of Brimbank City Council, approve Australian flag. Official Australian flag include Australian Aboriginal flag, the tolerate straight islands flag and many sign used in defense and civilian organization. The Australian Aboriginal flag were proclaimed on fourteenth of July nineteen ninety-five. Permission is not required to fly the Australian Aboriginal flag. The tolerate straight island, islander flag was proclaimed in May nineteen ninety-two. Permission is not required to fly the tolerate straight islander flag. There are other iconic flags with our community flown, displayed in the community, such as the rainbow flag, often known as the gay pride flag or LGBT QI pride black flag, which is a recognized symbol of bright and social movement. The flag is typically flown horizontal with the red stripe on the top. So, council does fly flag on the key day selects I Day, COVID Day, but not, this is not an official proclaim flag. Same with the Coban Flag, it's not a country flag, but it's a flag that the community who live in Brimbank- but it's a flag that the community who live in Brimbank or in Australia and many other countries believe in. And it's a symbol of flag. It's the flag representing their call for freedom, call for their ground and identity. So therefore, why can't the Rainbow flag be flown and not Cobang? That's why I'm strongly calling on our fellow councillors to support Cobang flag to be recognised for. Thank you.
Okay, that ends the debate. I'm sorry, there's no further discussion. So I will put the item to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Madam Mayor, I'd like to say that you're on it. Thank you. Councillors, Councilor Papafouzio has called a division. So I'm going to ask for the vote again, and I'm going to ask everyone to stand until your name is called, so it can be recorded in the minutes. So again, I'll call for the vote. All those in favour, please stand. In favour, we have Councilor Taran Arndt, Councilor Bruce Langish, Councilor Sam David, Councilor Kim Tien Trung, Councilor Daniel Allen, Councilor Virginia Tarkos, Councilor Victoria Borg, Councilor Margaret, the duty chair, and the mayor, Councilor Lucinda Congru. All those against, please stand. Thank you. And please let the minutes record that Councilor Georgina Papafouzio has abstained from voting on this particular item, and the item is carried. Okay. So we're moving on to the next item of business. Members of the gallery, the council will be available after the council meeting. Should you want to have a conversation and interact, we just need to get on with the business of councils at this point in time. So you're welcome to wait in the foyer or stay in the gallery for the meeting. Okay, so we're moving on to item 12.3, which is planning activity update and delegate decisions from March 2019. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this particular item? No? Is there a mover of the item? Councilor Langish, would you like to move the item? Councilor Langish?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll move the item as a notice paper.
Thank you, Councilor Langish. And is there a seconded for this item? Councilor Hittich? Councilor Langish, would you like to speak to the item? No? Councillors, is there any discussion on this item? No? Councilor Hittich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to make a few points. Planning activity update and delegate decisions report comes in every month. And this month, it's been particularly interesting where my prosperous Brimbank had. And I heard your comments earlier about going out and attracting, I guess, business to Brimbank. And I look at the report and I see that we have a number of industrial matters going on at the moment. We've got a four million dollar investment in a warehouse in Gerance. We've got two and a half million dollars in industrial premises in Tullamarin. And we have a residential front, thirty-two and a half million dollar project going ahead of Winkwood Drive in North Sunshine, part of the pace development of every valley stage five. And we also have a down Schwepwey, St Albans Sunshine building will be completed. Down there, we have a residential grocer and a medical centre being put forward for six and a half million bucks. All these are significant contributions to our local economy. They are investments in our future. They are jobs for our future. And I think, just wanted to acknowledge the work going on around the community through the council in attracting business into this area. Again, I like to stand beside you as you go along and do this piece of work that you're doing around the company, well, the business development. I do likewise in my portfolio and look forward to working closely together as we get forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hittich. Councillors, is there any more discussion on this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. Okay, we move on to item 12.4, which is planning compliance activity update from January 31 of March 2019. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a motion, councillors? Certainly, there is. Councilor Judichu, as per papers, that's seconded by Councilor Borg. Is there any discussion on this item? Councilor Judichu? Councilor Borg? Is there a seconded?
I just want to mention a couple of highlights, Madam Mayor. And one is the Brimbank Community Grants Programme. Council has allocated $560,000 for 2018-2019 progress.
Sorry, Councilor Borg, you're on the next item. So we're on item 12.4? Oh, sorry. That's okay. Councillors, is there any quick discussion in relation to item 12.4 on the agenda? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, now we're onto item 12.5, which is planning application P0146-2018 for the construction of alterations and additions to the existing drawing and the construction of two double-storey drawings to the rear at number eight, Delmont Street, Albion. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this particular item? No? Is there a motion? Councilor Allen?
I'd like to move the motion as printed in the business papers.
Thank you. And is there a seconded, Councilor Langish? And Councilor Allen, would you like to speak to this motion?
Thank you. We see a lot of applications that come across the council for decisions, whether they're granted or not. And we've seen designs that might tick all the right boxes, but they're not exactly good designed. Having looked at the area and the plans, I believe this planning app should be approved. I believe this development adds to the street appeal and the benefit of Albion. Currently, there's a fence rung all the way along the side of the street, and I think housing on that corner where there is continuous line fencing would be a benefit to the community. The modern planning design, I believe, is in character with the neighbourhood. I also agree, I don't agree with the argument we heard that if there aren't any double-storey buildings, then no other ones should be built, isn't it? I don't think that that argument is very strong, and I don't agree with that personally. I mean, you go around the area and you will see plenty of double-storey areas wherever you walk. We see other designs where three units are developed right behind each other. You only see one house in the front, there's another two in the back. I think this one being on a corner is a good design. You've got three houses that, well, once you build the two, you'll end up with three houses that go on the big street. And that's all. I would like to support this motion.
Thank you, Councilor Allen. Councilor Langish, is there a seconded who wants to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, just to support the comments made by Councilor Allen and some quick comments that having an existing house retained means minimum impact on the street frontage to Delmont, and the two new houses are fronting a side street, which is basically fronting a side fence of the drawing. So again, I think Councilor Allen has given that one a head that this is minimum impact and adding more drawings, which of course we need in terms of affordability for our residents, but minimum impact on the local community, in a sense, I support those comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Langish. Councillors, is there any more discussion on this particular item? Councilor Hittich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I stand also to support the application. My reason, I always go out and have a look around the community that the application has been reported, and again, I did it in this one. We'd been at Albion a couple of times before and had a look at a couple of applications that had five units on a corner block, and there were significant impacts with traffic on an elbow street and so on, and a whole range of other features around streets gave the neighbourhood character of that. In this particular site, I think in walking around and having a look at the housing and having a look at the various different developments that have gone on in the area and the need for further development of the area, I think there are a number of houses that do need some restoration, and that the two-story development like this would not detract from neighbourhood character. That it would add to neighbourhood character eventually in this particular area. And I think that the issues that were highlighted, the one that worried me the most was the oversight into the property across the road. I think that one can be overcome and is generally overcome, however, the developments of this nature are built. So for me, I try very, I try very hard to see it from the objective's point of view. I did see it from their point of view, but I concluded in the end that when you give due weight to all those features of traffic, of, I guess, character, of livability and so on, and have a look at what's going on around those streets and around those different areas, that this was a worthwhile application and should we support it. That was my idea.
Thank you, Councilor Hittich. Councillors, is there any further discussion on this item? No? Yes, Councilor David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd feel like to support the motion put forward by Councilor Allen. And indeed, we do this potentially time to support the community where we feel is warranted to do so. And just last month, we rejected nine-months' legal property or development in Derby Street. And that was, that was the reason behind it, because of the feeling that the house, the school nearby, the angle of the corner road was so much of a dangerous present there. So we rejected it unanimously. On this one though, it is something that we believe we're going to see in the near future, more than type of buildings to come along. It is not good. Many have been managed on their building two and three development without asking questions. This we have to look at all the areas, and recently, our friends, the residents in Albion, they're taking in turn. Every time it's an obligation in Albion, they want to object to it, and every one of them, as a unit. And it's not good. We have to see that we support a good development and of course reject some that we feel is not warranted for the community. I do support it, the motion of Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor David. Councillors, any further discussion on this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're now moving on to item 12.6, which is the government's report for April 2019. Now, Councillors, this is quite a lengthy report. Is there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a motion? Councilor Judichu?
I'll move the recommendation as printed in the business papers, Madam Mayor, with part D to appoint representatives and delegates to the committees for the period from the 17th of April 2019, until council resolves otherwise as follows.
Sorry, Councilor Judichu, can I just stop you for one moment? I just want to update councillors and let you know, or remind you, that the the CEO appointment review terms of reference, that'll be sitting in the business papers, are not the correct terms of reference, that you have an updated terms of reference on your desk.
I was going to mention that.
Sorry, Madam Mayor. Councilor Judichu, I'm sorry, so I just want to confirm. Oh, yes. And there...
Okay, I will continue, as we have before us in our own paperwork. As you say, the revised terms of reference for the Chief Executive Officer Employment Matters Committee are to be noted, and as going by the council agenda papers, the Collective Action Committee, Councilor Borg, Chair, Councilor Papafouzio, Co-Chair, Councilor Judichu. Metropolitan Transport Forum will be now Councilor Langish. The St Albans Town Centre Partnership Group is now Councilor Tarkos. The Sunshine Town Centre Partnership Group is now Councilor David, and all councillors can attend ex officio. And the Chief Executive Employment Matters Committee are now Councillors Congru, yourself, Madam Mayor, Councilor Judichu, myself, Councilor Tarkos, and Councilor Hittich. Thank you.
Sorry, is there one more? Councilor Judichu is the Brooklyn Industrial Precinct Strategy Committee.
Yes, Councilor David.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillors, is there a seconded for this item? Just wait for these to be populated.
Yep.
Let's talk first. It'll be Councilor Borg.
Borg, yeah.
Oh, cheers. Three of the wrong days.
Yes, that's fine. It's different in the council agenda than in the paper.
And Councillors, we just want to make sure we get this right. You're going to register it? Okay. Councillors, is there a seconded for this motion? Councilor Tarkos? And Councilor Judichu, would you like to discuss this?
Yes, Madam Mayor. It's important to note this monthly report, Madam Mayor, which in essence is a summary of council activity, of meeting parliament chairings to representing council on various committees, to the CEO's delegation, and also to note councillors who will be going interstate to represent council at very important conferences. In this governance report, the community grand strategic directions are tabled and noted. We also have the final committee appointments, which I've just mentioned, and we also have the MAV, State Council motions, being the motion on the noting of the federal government announcement on the Melbourne Airport round link and associated infrastructure projects, again, change for this area. There is also a motion to establish a task force to combat copper theft, which has cost this council $1 million recently. I would also note that the council code of conduct will be adopted and accepted, and I hope that it will be accepted by all councillors and will be signed in due course. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Judichu. Councilor Tarkos, would you like to speak to this item?
Just to endorse this one, as Councilor Judichu said, but also just to take note of the more little projects that have been approved in terms of the contracts that make a big difference to our community, such as the Keelaw Recreation Reserve Female Friendly Change Room Alterations. The contracts awarded, Keelaw Lodge Reserve Female Friendly Change Room Alterations, contract approved. Supply and installation of portable change rooms for Parcels Reserve, contract approved. And Sunshine Leisure Centre Kios, retail space renovations, and Alexandra Avenue Kindergarten Playground. All these little, small applications of the contracts will make a big difference to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Tarkos. Councilor Judichu, is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this item? Councilor Hittich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to speak briefly about the costs, the council conduct matters, and the code of conduct review, the internal procedure procedures that have been ordered. I ask that councillors reflect on the costs. We've got $80,000 mentioned in here as the official costs of the council conduct panel process and arbitration processes. But as we know, that's the tip of the iceberg, there wasn't a lot of money spent inside council, dealing with these issues as they were going on. And I guess for me, the question is, would you do it again? What for? Why did it happen? Would we do it again? And then I go to our code of conduct review and the internal dispute resolution procedure review, and I think it does strengthen it quite a bit. The timelines and various other, I guess, improvements to the dispute resolution process will come. Council work through matters like this should they occur again. I have expressed previously, I have concerns that these sorts of things don't happen again without there being some preventative measures in the code of conduct. It's good to see that this new dispute resolution process will be, this internal resolution process will be voted on tonight and will become part of the code of conduct, should everyone endorse it. I guess the step I'm looking forward to after that is a further review of the code of conduct over the coming months, as we look to strengthen it even further. As much as we can do in other parts of the code of conduct as well. We've inherited one that makes quite a bit of work, and I look forward to working with councillors on that. I think there's been a good piece of work done on this internal resolution. It's been worked on by everyone, and I thank them for that. I just don't want to ever go through anything like this again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Hittich. Councillors, and Councilor Papafouzio?
Thank you. Fellow councillors, I would like to take this opportunity to recognise...
Fellow councillors, I would like to take this opportunity to recognise the commitment and dedication of our mayor's work during the month of March. Our mayor, Councillor Congreve, has met and strongly advocated to nine members of Parliament in relation to Brimbank's priorities, such as Melbourne Airport Railway Link, St Albans Legion City and Jocks for the West. Councillor Congreve has worked hard to develop, to further develop strong constructive and respectful relationships with both states of goodwill and peace. She has successfully contributed to establishing strong connections, which we hope will support Brimbank's priorities financially. So I'd just like to take this opportunity to recognise and commend all her hard work and her long hours. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Papafolio. Councilors, any other discussion on this particular item? No? I'll put to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Now, councillors, as we've just adopted our revised code of conduct of the internal resolution procedure, we have three months under the Local Government Act to sign that document. We need to do that in front of the CEO, so we will do that at the next opportunity to fulfil our obligations in that regard. So we move now to item 12.7, which is a proposal to rename McGrath Place Sunshine Mall to Ben Town Place. Councilors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this particular item? No? Is there a motion? Councillor Papafolio?
As proposed in the papers.
Thank you, Councillor Papafolio. And is there a second after this item? Councillor Fan? Would you like to speak to the item? Councillor Papafolio?
Thank you. The name Ben Town comes from a notable market within, sorry, I welcome the proposed name Ben Town by the developer of 1A McGrath Place. The name Ben Town comes from a notable market within a major city in Vietnam. It holds great symbolic significance because many structures survived the Vietnam War and French colonisation. I support the proposal as it recognises the large Vietnamese community in the area and will rectify the issue of duplications for McGrath, ensuring public safety is held within the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Papafolio. And with a second I'd like to speak, Councillor Fan? No? Is there any other discussion? Councillor David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'm standing forward as well, but at the same time, I just, the news about the family, my family, which have been in Sunshine for years and years and years, most of them have lost Sunshine and Sunshine, they're one of the, the whole area, had my quarry, which is still there. And I understand the rules as they put before us by our officers and they've got every right to do so. And I'm honest that if you, in the, in the organization, if you're sending perhaps advertising the Start Weekly and that of the website, now Start Weekly, and we've got one of our journalists here tonight, I don't get it. I don't get any supply of the paper at all. But when I do, I get the phone and ring them up, the week after they come along with the paper. And that's it, normal deliveries. Again, if I want to, I just have to ring them up. I'll pick up a copy downstairs from the council. So what I'm saying is about the, the Start Weekly or the website. In website, of course, you're dealing with a lot of elderly people in the area and they wouldn't know, they wouldn't read the website. So I think the best way and the cheapest way is to print about thirty, forty, fifty, if you like. Just put them around to the neighbourhood and explain to them what's happening. I think that's the best way, the democratic way. So I'll live to that.
Thank you, Councillor David. Councilors, any other discussion on this item? Councillor Hitt?
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, I take on board what Councillor David was saying, there are a lot of McGrath quarries and things around, around the area, and that particular one of these days is intentional. I guess I'm reporting a weird consultation on this, so we'll hear back from the community a bit more about the pros and cons of this particular name proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Hitt. Councilors, any further discussion on this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now moving on to item 12.8, which is the final draft Brimbank Settlement Action Plan of 1923. Councilors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? No? Do I have a motion? Councillor Borg?
I move the motion as the business papers.
Thank you, Councillor Borg. Is there a second? Councillor Tacos? Councillor Borg, would you like to speak to this item?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. The Brimbank people portfolio covers issues such as low state planning and lifelong learning. This final draft settlement action plan, built on the previous achievements of the settlement action plan 2013 to 2017. Importantly, the plan aims to provide long-term strategies that respond to challenges both new and emerging communities may face when settling in Brimbank. Brimbank continues to grow as one of the most multicultural municipalities in Australia. The new settlers, such as refugees, humanitarian entrants, asylum seekers, migrants and skilled migrants, make up a significant portion of our city's new and emerging communities. The plan aims to help our new communities with a range of actions that address education and training, employment, family and social connections, civic participation, language services, housing, transport and service provision. I commend this report to council.
Thank you, Councillor Borg. Councillor Tacos, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, just to echo the words of Councillor Borg, Madam Mayor, the action plan policy is very important because Brimbank is the destination and successful settlement for many migrants and new arrivals. This has been grown in several of our council papers, which include the Brimbank Social Justice Charter, which acknowledges the inequity in access to resource and aims to address this in understanding what creates these disadvantages. Also in the Refugee Welcome Zone, the RWZ, which is an L G O term used to promote the commitment we make in making refugees feel welcome into our community and uphold human rights and promote compassion and initiative of the Refugee Council of Victoria. Legislative framework, this includes the National Settlement Framework of the Local Government Act of 89 and Victoria Multicultural Act of 2011, also incorporated in our Brimbank Counter Plan of 2017 to 2021. Brimbank is one of the fastest-growing and culturally diverse hearts of the Melbourne West. Over half of all of us originally from overseas and have made Brimbank our destination and our home. Why this is such an important strategy and plan? Thank you, Councillor Tacos. Councilors, anyone else would like to speak? Councillor Hitt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to reflect on, I guess, some of the key things that have been coming up in the community about the settlement action plans. One that keeps coming up in conversations I have is, and it doesn't come out that strongly in the plan, but it is, I guess, on everyone's switch from time to time, is cross-cultural education. We have a couple of new communities in Brimbank at the moment, the Chin community and South Sudneff community, and their cultures are not well understood. Those cultures also don't understand many of the other cultures in our, in our city and the indigenous community, and the indigenous culture as well, I should say. So for me, I'd like to put on the table again that cultural education is so critical to understanding each other and to being able to, I guess, include and tolerate different behaviours and, and different ways of living our daily lives. And it is an important piece of, I guess, community infrastructure that needs to be programmed and provided somewhere. I also make the point that we've seen just recently down in Central Sunshine, the Chin community experiencing difficulties with the funding it's received for English language services. We heard where the community, the Chin community provides English language services to its own people. Those that can speak English can use the various Chin dialects, the seven dialects, to communicate with new arrivals. And that is how things are done. But the settlement funding that's coming through, the funding that's coming through for English education runs out halfway through the year. And therefore, the program has to stop and the people go on living their daily lives, but no, I guess, English language training. And then back again and starts again six months later. And this stop-start, stop-start, to me, is just so nonsensical. Here we are trying to educate and train people as quickly as possible to bring them in community, into community as soon as we possibly can, as soon as they're, they're able. Yet we have these programmatic funding allocation problems that just blow up. So for me, I'm really trying to advocate for, I guess, the legal team to talk very, very often and very strongly with the support of our council offices and the reports and information that they have, to strengthen our English language provision, particularly for the new communities, new and emerging communities that are coming into our city. It's a big, big issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Hitt. Councilors, any further discussion? Council Judith Chet?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Once we do not have direct influence on settlement, on newcomers, Madam Mayor, we are a vulnerable community. I have met several new residents and all have commented on how welcoming Brimbank is. We only need to attend the citizenship ceremony to see the smiles on their faces when you say you are now an Australian citizen. However, Madam Mayor, more funding from state and federal governments to agencies and service providers is required for people to settle easier, so to speak. The eight priority areas of education and training, employment, family and social connections, civic participation, language services, housing, transport and service provision are all no brainers. Council can assist in coordinating, collaborating and advocating. Our council plan clearly articulates goals to achieve an inclusive, livable and prosperous community whilst being a community-first council. Migrants will continue to come here, we hope that migrants will continue to come here, we certainly hope they do. And with this plan, we have a solid framework to make them feel welcome and help to coordinate services. I thank all involved in the formulation of this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Judith Chet. Councilors, any further discussion on this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now moving on to item 12.9, which is the Growing Brimbank Progress Report, April 2019. Councilors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a motion? Councillor Tacos?
I'd like to move the motion as the business papers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Tacos. Is there a second after that motion?
I'll say that with a little more.
Thank you, Councillor Judith Chet. Would you like to speak to the motion? Councillor Tacos?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, the Growing Brimbank Progress Report is underpinned by three reports. Number one, the Brimbank Atlas of Health and Education, published in 2014. Two, physical activities, sport and health in the city of Brimbank. And three, Brimbank Spatial Map of Physical and Social Infrastructure 2011 and Brimbank Spatial Map Summary Report. It has always been intended to be a long-term initiative and a partnership between Brimbank Council and Victoria University. And I have to say, Madam Mayor, this is one, one of the first three reports that I came across that helped me really understand what shapes Brimbank and the challenges that it faces. The above three reports are fundamental and I believe, believe underpin much of this current council's commitment to address the challenges in our community that has faced and still faces with health and wellbeing outcomes. And it is the very low ratio that was identified in those three reports to access to those sporting and recreational infrastructure, one of the longest in the state of Victoria, that promotes both organised and passive sports and recreation to help mitigate and address some of the chronic health conditions of our community. For myself, the progress of this report is fundamentally important to check into, to how we are progressing as a council in mitigating some of these massive chronic illnesses such as diabetes type two, obesity, poverty and disadvantage as reflected in the C F A index. It's about socialist prescribing programs and nutritional education programs to help address these issues, to build confidence and resilience and wellbeing in our community, also to improve our interventions in the early years, which is really critical, to help close that gap with working with partnerships with health organisations such as the Early Years Outreach Bus, the breastfeeding education and support, and partnering with Murdoch Children's Research Centre to help improve outcomes for disadvantaged children through better access and engagement of services. I fully support and endorse to continue to work with this strong evidence-based model to help close the gap and ensure our community thrives. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Tacos. Second to like to speak, Councillor Judith Chet?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, being recently appointed to the Collective Action Committee, this report is especially important for me. The four main areas this report looks at are physical activity, early years, nutrition and social prescribing, which I've never seen before. So since my portfolio is also innovation, I think it might fit into that as well. With social prescribing allows doctors to refer patients to help in the community to address underlying causes of social isolation, family violence and financial, financial stress that impacts on health. And we all know, Madam Mayor, that the causes of the social, social isolation is definitely a problem that we have in Brimbank. Family violence is a problem that we have in Brimbank and financial stress is also a problem that we have here in our city. So the model is being tested in, this model is being tested in Deer Park with I P C Health and North West Melbourne Primary Health. I look forward to the report that will follow after this pilot program's been put in place in the months to come, so that the Collective Action Committee can have a look at the results and discuss further. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Judith Chet. Councilors, is there anyone else would like to speak for this item? Councillor Hitt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support what was said before me. I guess for me, the reflection is that the growing Brimbank piece of work or the research and efforts that's been done by partners and council together is so valuable. We need an evidence base on to, I guess, go out and advocate and to develop programs and interventions that can do good in our community. I congratulate the council offices and the councilors who've been involved in the various activities that have gone on here around bringing to bear a number of initiatives across all these different areas of nutrition, social prescribing, disability areas and so on. They were much needed. Again, I think as we all know, there is much, much more to do. And this piece of research has been around for a while now and I think we need to be advocating really strongly wherever we go to meet members of Parliament or the Member and taking a copy of the document we have is so important that they see that they understand the sorts of things we're doing, meaning all the, in all parts of the life stage, and also in various areas of disease. And I guess talking or being going to commend the report to councillors and thank everyone for their work.
Thank you, Councillor Hitt. Councilors, is there any further discussion on this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now moving on to item 12.1, which is contract number 12-1449, the provision of management and maintenance for Kiel Public Golf Course, the extension of contract. Councilors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a motion? Councilors? Councillor Lancashire? Seconded by, sorry?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I put the recommendations in the notice paper.
Thank you. Seconded by Councillor Hitt. Councillor Lancashire, would you like to speak to the motion? No? Councillor Hitt, would you like to speak to the motion? Is there any discussion on this item, councillors? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're moving on to 12.11, which is the final draft Go St Albans Action Plan 2019 to 2024.
May I would like to explain that in direct conflict of interest that family business
Thank you, Councillor Fan. Can you outtake minutes to reflect? Councillor Fan may leave in the room. Okay, councillors, so we are considering audit of the final draft Go St Albans Action Plan 2019 to 2024. Councilors, is there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a motion? Councillor Tacos?
I'd like to move the motion as the business papers. Thank you.
And is there a second after the motion? Councillor Lancashire? And would you like to speak? Councillor Tacos?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As everyone is aware, that St Albans Town Centre is already a vibrant and multicultural centre. We've all come to love with a thriving business, now sporting, cultural mix evolving. But we want to attract even more people to Brimbank. we want to attract even more people to visit shop, work, study and live there. The final draft action plan is a product of a comprehensive consultation process with the stakeholders, business owners, businesses and workshops in the area. Some changes have, they made, which include increasing the timeframe to two thousand and twenty-four, strengthening the vision by improving cleaning and maintenance standards at St Albans station and across the centre, and better wayfinding features, delivering further murals to help activate areas throughout the precinct and targeting, targeting private walls and also the provision of a potential, which I think is very exciting, Twilight Market. After this success we've had the last two years of the St Albans Scrumptious Festival, people have non-stop been saying this is a perfect location for our Twilight Markets, ongoing Twilight Markets. The amazing activation of Princess Street, which we have seen recently, that's just been opened up, the feedback has been just incredible. What was once a very dingy and horrible lane has become an active bright, just adding so much to that to your precinct. I can't thank council officers enough for developing that. And we've already taken, taken a very tired and disjointed precinct around Errington Reserve and are now slowly transforming it into an amazing cultural precinct through place-making. Once Errington Phase Two is completed, it will indeed make it a place we all feel proud and I believe will become a great tourist attraction for the arts, sports, culture, cuisine, all merging together. The unique St Albans field is something we strongly wish to retain however, and not be lost, but to promote it more effectively and also deliver a good car parking strategy through our Collins Street Master Plan that works in well with this action plan, that can support this action plan as well. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tarkos. Councillor Langishire, would you like to speak as a second? Thank you. Councillors, any further discussion on this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're right, councillor Fan, back into the room. Welcome back councillor Fan. So now moving on to item 12.12, which is the draft Sunshine Rising Action Plan 2019 to 2024. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? None? Is there a motion? Councillor Headet?
Move the space.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor David. Councillor Headet?
Councillor Trump?
Oh, seconded by councillor Trump. Councillor Headet, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'd like to commend this particular report to councillors. I guess some of the key things that I have to note are the vision for the Sunshine Centre has been refined to better reflect the opportunities associated with the Mail and Sunshine Super Hub. And the implementation plan is geared towards investment attraction with a focus on brand and identity. Mail, Sunshine Super Hub engagement, that we're all looking forward to happening through various means. We see surveys out there at the moment and various other mechanisms to happen over the next, the coming months and years as we try and promote a new vision for Sunshine Centre. We are looking to advocate for the investment act, as you've spoken about previously, and we're continuing council's programme to improve the physical appearance of the centre through the works such as Amchee Road and various others, to continue to activate the centre through events and activities. Some of the key priorities include implementation of council's responsible western rail plan, that's our community consultation at the moment with the VIV, the National Community and I guess, we serve to strengthen and fill out this particular new Sunshine Rising plan, which will help position Sunshine as the capital of Melbourne's west for regional offices and services. It will hopefully facilitate high-end residential development in and around the centre. Hopefully, we can get a good car parking strategy going around here. I was just watching that Big Roads areas the other day, there are, there was congestion going, we're going to add two more stories and we're going to do all sorts of other things and I worry. The other point is to strengthen and promote the retail and entertainment offer to capture greater patronage and expenditure and to build on the growing visitor economy. And I guess the work that's gone on for many years through the work of the strategic planning area in council has recommended, this particular version of Sunshine Rising is quite distant one, it's been through many iterations, and this feedback that we get from the community now will help us take it to a new level again. So I commend the Sunshine Rising report that's in front of us to councillors and I look forward to hearing from the community as it has it say, on what we'd seek to have a vision for the Sunshine area and beyond.
Thank you councillor Headet. Councillor Trump, would you like to speak? No? Councillor David?
Thank you, madam mayor, I'd just like to reiterate, with honour to councillor Headet. The Sunshine Task and the Partnership Group, met last month on the 14th of March, madam mayor, and is chaired by the very charismatic chairman, Mr Ock Magora. The key items of the business include an update from Vicini about the Sunshine Marketplace. The council was prepared its draft response to the very great plan and pending council consideration, rather than go a four-week community consultation. The council was preparing the draft Sunshine Rising Action Plan and pending council consideration will undergo a six-week community consultation. And also the group reported its next meeting on the ninth of May to consider the draft Sunshine Rising Action Plan pending council's consideration tonight. And indeed, as councillor Headet said, commended the offices for working so hard and putting this report before us tonight. Thank you, madam.
Thank you councillor David. Councillors, any further discussion on this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, so that's the end of the officer reports for this evening. We move on to item number thirteen, which is notices of motion. There are no notices of motion this evening. Moving on to item number fourteen, which is recission motions, and there are no recission motions this evening. So on to item fifteen, which is urgent business. There is no urgent business this evening. So moving on to item sixteen, which is confidential business, and there is one item of confidential business listed in tonight's agenda. May I have a move of a motion? Any questions?
I'm sorry that I might have the indirect conflict of interest thing, so I also want to leave the...
Oh, in the, okay. Okay, sorry. Thank you. Thank you councillor Trump. So, Fan, so, Fan. Okay, so may I have a move of a motion to close the meeting to the public for consideration of item sixteen point one, which has been designated as confidential. Councillor Papafolio, seconded by councillor Judy Chair. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, thank you all for your patience and the council has considered the confidential item of business and resolved that at this stage it will remain confidential. So I'd like to thank everybody for attending this evening and thank you for your interest in tonight's meeting. It was nice to have a full gallery for the change and I'd like to close this meeting now closed at nine twenty-three PM. Thank you.